So, here we are. What's up everyone? And already thanks for tuning in to the first real paired study session. I hope you're all pretty excited. Got some really special guests here. First of all, Ben CB, the creator of paired and race wedge. He can give a short hello if he wants to. Then I can already check how the sound is working. And we got Julian Thomas, who obviously is a NoLimp Gaming long time member, highly respected in the poker community etc etc. Everyone knows who he is. Can you say something as well Julian? Yeah, yeah, wait, someone is saying already, no, no sound, no, no sound for the desktop audio. Yeah, I fixed it already, can you say something now?
Yeah, test, test.
Okay, yeah, 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 it works, there we go, there we go, works already. Nice, okay, well you didn't hear them saying hello, but I, but I think, I think that will be alright. Okay. Um, so yeah, should we jump in for the first, for the first two hands? Ben already has created two spots in paired for two hands that I sent him, which were pretty interesting. Um, and I'd say we just jump right into the first, to the first hand, right?
Yes, let's go.
The title is, yeah, exactly, the title is Big Blind vs MP32 Big Blinds Effective. I'm just gonna go right ahead. You have 60 seconds to answer his question, this, I had some small issues the last time, I timed out one or two times in my, in my first session on stream on paired, I have to admit. Um, do I click start on next, what was it again? So just, just start, right?
Yeah, just start, yeah.
Then we get to the first question, alright.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see what I did in this beautiful hand. Okay, we see in the, in the top, it's a GG tournament, it was a 5k bounty during the Spring Festival. So, pretty spicy tournament. And we already have the first question, which I assume is gonna be about the openers range, and once I click here, there's 60 seconds, oh they're already running, let's go. What is another gun's opening range with 35 big blinds? Okay Julian, I guess it's on to us to solve this.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit confusing because it doesn't show percentage, which is kinda nice, because then you have to look for the bottom combos, but I think...
I would count out the middle one, because I don't think 2 is as good as 35.
You might, if you zoom out, if you zoom out a bit, try to zoom out with control and your mouse wheel.
Ooh, there we have the spot again, that's nice, yeah.
Yeah, you can also, then you can change the overlay and then you have the frequencies as well.
Okay, we got 7 seconds left Julian, I'm on the...
Yeah, it has to be the very right, the very right.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say that too, and we are correct. Last second decision, as you like it, time bank to the last second.
And I think whenever, whenever you're studying with it, it's very important to keep some heuristics or some like, some crucial points of the range, so what, why do we wanna play this range? Well, look at the pocket pairs, right, just, we don't wanna be opening all of the pocket pairs and then around the jack eights and the 10 eights suited, and then all the hands that are better, some ace eight and ace nine offs, and that's like mostly because if you remember this, you will remember everything else in that range, right? It's like you don't need to exactly be like, because when you can open ace eight off, you probably have an idea that you can open queen jack off as well, you can open jack nine suited, you can open king eight suited, right? And if you already remember this, you're doing pretty well.
Alright, yeah, I also feel like some players in Population who might not study their ranges too often, which I might fall into that category myself as well. It can easily happen that you might open the same range from under the gun of any stack size, I think. I think that's something that typically players might fall into. And yeah, as you already said, like the pocket pairs is a pretty obvious thing where you definitely don't wanna be opening them off short stacks, but yeah, I'll say, let's continue. We see probably everyone else folding, and we see myself calling, which might already be close actually. Um, what is the big blinds response to another gun one open? This is on to us again Julian.
Let me see, it's pretty...
Yeah, I'm gonna zoom in again, show the question, so we don't see the spot anymore, but we see the range is a bit better.
Ah, okay, yeah, that's better, so I'm also looking for the bottom part, but it seems that the bottom part is quite fixed here, so it's gotta be about the three betting range. We have, we don't have too much time to...
I think at 35, I...
Uh, I don't think the very left is right.
The middling part with the kicks in is also weird. We got 10 seconds left, I would go for the, well, you said the very left is not right, then should we go for the far right again?
Uh, but I don't think 10s are all in three bet and eight, so it's gotta be the left if...
We, we, we timed out again Julian.
Uh, so, the thing is that, uh, the thing is that, um, sevens will usually, sevens, eights, nines, it's weird that they're not all in three bet, like the red one is all in, right?
Hmm, I would not think that, because we got some kings in there.
No, no, oranges, oranges all in. Ah, okay, okay, I was confused, because in higher it's usually the other way around, that the dark red is all in, right?
Yeah, we can also, we can also see it here, but if I focus on it again, we can see it again.
Okay, yeah, then, then it makes sense, that it's one of the, it's either the middle or the right one then, because it does make sense that sevens, uh, non-all-in and then the others all-in and the same. Or you sometimes see that, right, you see that, uh, sevens is non-all-in, right? And I've seen that some, I wouldn't do that, because like, first of all, the V difference is super marginal, so it's like for me again, okay, we can three bet some of these off-suited hands, but also as I released my YouTube video, I think exploitively, it makes more sense to be three betting, like 7-6, 7-5 suited, because you're gonna be facing more calls in, 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 in reality, people are not gonna be four bet jiving, uh, king queen, queen jack suited, king ten suited, like you're supposed to be four bet shoving a lot of these hands, as well as low-suited aces and some low pocket pairs. Um, so I believe that we're gonna be facing more calls, and it's just so much harder. Like, I would never three bet queen seven off here. Um, because, yeah, it's, it's slightly better in terms of the V, but like a 7-6 suited, you're just going to be doing way less mistakes, and 7-5 suited, or a 6-4 suited, and I mean, I don't know how this is with you Julian or Leon, like, how, how, what do you think? Where are you going to be realizing more V with three, uh, playing a three bet pot out of position with queen seven off, or let's say a 6-5 suited?
I mean, it's, it's, it seems rather obvious that, as you already said, the playability is way, way higher with the suited connectors. I myself have to say, I got quite used to, um, to doing it though with the offsuit, like, in this spot, I would choose a queen eight off pretty frequently, I would choose my offsuit king X pretty frequently, and I think I'm, I've become quite comfortable in the last few months with playing those three bet pots out of position with those hands, and essentially just going really aggressive, because I think we receive a lot of overfalls. But, um, before that, I was struggling a lot, and then I would have definitely benefited by having some more playability in there.
You need to, you need to put in some work, uh, in order to also look up some spots, because you need to find some very unnatural bluffs, you need to pull a trigger on a lot of boards where, you know, you just gotta go crazy with, with queen seven off, and if you, if you haven't looked into that, you won't realize the V that is displaying you pre-flop. And then queen seven off will become worse with three betting than with calling, and you actually want to start calling those. Because if you take, if you look at the V of 7-6 suited, it's all, even in theory, it's always way better three betting than a queen seven off. The reason we wanna be three betting queens seven off is just slightly better than calling. But let's say you make 0.2 and 0.18 with calling, but 7-6 suited will be 0.8 with three betting, but with calling you make 0.84.
Yeah, I, I, I did indeed see that video that you made on that, and I think that's, that's quite logical, and, and it's, it's, it's pretty easy to see that in equilibrium, there are like such small margins happening when the robot plays against a robot, and once Population deviates just a little bit from that, we can make such sick adjustments, and I think there's a lot of potential that might, that some players might not realize, but yeah.
And all I want to say is that you really need to ask yourself that question. Have you put in that work, have you studied these spots out of position, and for me, it's just not worth my time in order to generate like a tiny fraction of a big blind. I know that I'm feel very comfortable playing a three bet pot out of position with suited connectors, even with that stack size, I mean, we're gonna be three betting it with 100 big blinds deeper anyway, that's like the main strategy, we're gonna be three betting 10 nine suited, 9 eight suited, just when we become shorter, we want to take more hands that contain a queen or king to block their four betting range, to block their value range, to unblock a lot of raise fours, this is something you guys need to keep in mind, and just not follow GTO blindly, because there are a lot of information missing. And this is why I like to do that with paired, because even with pre-flop ranges, I can add explanation videos, I can add that and say, listen guys, okay, this is what we're supposed to do according to theory, but if you wanna follow a strategy that contains three betting, like suited connectors even with stack sizes, with these stack sizes, totally fine.
Okay, cool, agreed. So suppose I'm gonna move on to the flop, and see how I played this, we are already in the question, we got a minute. What is another gun's wants equity on this board? I personally struggle with these questions, I have a hard time getting myself into this, are you better at this Julian?
Uh, not at all, because, um, I rarely, like on the flop, I rarely use equity as something that should guide my decision, because it's uh, often not telling me as much as nut distribution or something. But, I mean, that's, I, I'm pretty sure we have more than 45 here.
Yeah, I would say 70 is too much, and I would say 54, 54 is pretty, um, seems like the obvious answer.
Do we have 10 six off, we just looked at the pre-defending range, but I don't think, I don't think we do. Yeah, then it's more like 54, I'd say.
Nice, get this one right.
10 six off, it might go up to 60 or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that could make such a big difference, but I mean, there are many offset combos, so maybe, maybe it does.
Yeah, maybe, because 10 six off would also mean that we extend our range in some other part that has like only 20% equity. Are we, we're really crushing this thing? Did we fail at some point?
We, we, we timed out once, I think.
Oh, yeah, 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 but, but that was tough.
Maybe even try, no, 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 this one's, well, what is the overall seed bet frequency for another gun on this board?
Uh, so it's, oh, one has to be careful, because he's from low jacks, so all the queen jacks, queen tens, jack tens, he has, connect pretty well. But it can't be 80, so...
Yeah, 80 is not so much.
It's 45, right? And it also contains all these different sizings, right, one third, just to keep that in figure. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I usually think it's 45, but we might be wrong because...
Yeah, I would also tend towards 67, they also like the low pockets I'm missing, so, so the, yeah, so the the range should hit this pretty well with no clear misses, or maybe king win off, yeah, yeah.
That was a very good point that you said, and this is such a crucial thought process. Like, you don't need to get the entire spot in all the hands, but understanding, hey, you know what, we're not gonna have pocket fours, pocket threes, which is is, but we have, still, we have sevens, we have eights, we have nines, we have sixes, we have tens, right? So it's actually, let's say if the board is, let's say, um, four, five dews, or, you know, 6, 5, 4, it's already much worth, because we're lacking some of the bottom sets, right? And on 7, 8, 9, we still have our king nines, ace nines, we even have some ace nine offs. But like, we have, still have a decent amount of pairs, and as you said, we're, we're not going to be having these like very trashy hands with pocket fours, or pocket threes, or pocket dews on this board. So this is really, really, really good, just to, because this really has really helped you to understand, hey, okay, so board is not too bad for us. So as Julian also said, like, it's not so much about the numbers, it's more, more important, okay, where does the equity come from?
For sure, yeah, I think this is also like a pretty typical board for people to be like, oh, okay, this is connected and, and pretty red. Surely this is good for the big blind, but, um, yeah, you do see a lot of small betting even from early position. Might seem unnatural, but in terms of the range, it does actually make sense.
Uh, one more point about this, it also depends whether you allow big blind to have a donk betting strategy. Because for example, I, I myself never bet, uh, play with a donk betting strategy from the big blind, even though in a number of boards are pretty easy to find where you, where you might have a, um, donk betting range, so if big blind, um, donk bets here, usually seed betting frequency goes up, because the, um, checking range is slightly more weak. Yeah, I think you were not supposed to be leading on this board.
Um, I, I don't think so either, but I like the approach of, um, yeah, donking has to be like such a strange and really, really hard to master concept, and I don't think it's bad to miss out on donks at all. I personally tried to implement them, because I also think imposition is gonna make a bunch of mistakes, or Population in general, but I don't think it's bad at all to completely miss out on them.
Okay, now let's test our knowledge without looking it up. What do you guys think, which are the boards on general, if you play 40, 50, 60, 60 big blinds around this deck size, and also maybe the chat can throw in some guesses, what are the type of boards where we wanna be donking from the big blind?
Well, I think it's heavily dependent on having offsuit strong nutted hands, AKA having offsuit two pairs, having offsuit straights, where the big blind is also lacking them. Um, I think, like, super, super low, you, you, you just mentioned the board is bad for us, like 5-3, you mentioned 6-4, I don't think those should be donked that heavily, especially in those positions, because the offset ones are lacking. We're getting a lot of guesses in, 6-5-4, 6-7-8, 6-4-dos, rainbows being, being spitted.
Yeah, I think the rule is really, uh, the rule is, I don't think it's so much about, I mean, two pairs are part of it, but the main part of the range that's relevant here is offsuit straight combos that big blind has, but IP doesn't have. So 6-5-4 is, if I recall right, the number one, uh, number one flop that we donk bet, because IP doesn't have 7-8 off. And it doesn't have a lot of one hands in general. That's true as well, yeah.
Yeah, we'll say something like that as well, I don't think the chat, the chat is too far off.
Yeah. Yeah, 6-5-4 is for sure the number one, and I mean, uh, it's just, uh, I mean, to me, it's probably too obvious to state, but, uh, if you have an offsuit straight, like 7-8 on 6-5-4, it's not blocked. It's 16 total combos of nuts that you have, or when you just look at the offsuit part, it's 12 combos versus zero combos, and that's such a big impact, and for example, if you have sets or two pairs, they are always blocked by the board, and straights are never blocked, which is a good thing.
Uh, that, that's, that's a good point, I think that easily is missed out a lot. Um, I think that's also a concept that happens on monotone boards as well a lot, right, when, but I mean, this is a totally different different topic, so let's not get too deep into it, but I think this is something that you can easily miss, so thanks for pointing that out. But yeah, again, good job to the chat.
What do you think about like, let's say 7-5-3 Julian, or like 8-4-5? Um, 7-5-3, so we have 6-4 off, like on 6-5-4, we might even have, I don't know, like if 7-3 off is usually a fold in the big blind, but if somebody min raises, and sometimes in some bounty builders and stuff, there's more than one big blind end in the middle where you also have 7-3 off. Um, what, what did you say exactly, which one? Uh, 7-5-3 and 8-5-4. 7-5-3, so we have... Well, you basically, you only have that middling straight, right, because on 6-5-4, you have the 7-8, and you have the 2-3 suited as well. Yeah, yeah, I still think there's some donking, but the amount of two pairs goes down on 7-4-3, 7-5-3.
I already started the next question, sorry for, uh, having rushed into it, I thought, before you guys started your conversation, I thought it was over. I tried thinking about it, I'm just gonna pick the 7 here, okay?
Uh, it could be anything, 7 or 10.
I, I didn't want to interrupt you guys in your heated discussion, so I had to do this on my own now, but I got it right, the 7% it is. But yeah, this is interesting, like I mentioned earlier, how there's like way more small betting than you'd expect, but I didn't expect like that, being like almost no, no big bets, it's quite interesting.
Yeah, I mean, it's just because all the queen jacks, queen tens connect so nicely with that. It's a big difference whether you have 9-8-7 or 8-7-4, 8-7-5 or something. Because on 8-7-5, queen jack, queen ten doesn't connect so well. There's a question one second, would you ever dunk a flop? A flop below straight, or just when you have the right opponent? Uh, what, what is a flop below straight?
A flop below straight might be a 3 dros on 6-5-4, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's... Go ahead Julian. Uh, for me, like, whenever we have a donk bet spot, for me, that's, like, whenever we have a split on one street, that's nothing more than a range split spot for me. And range split spots always work, um, with the same principle. You have to be, um, checking and betting strong and weak hands, um, alike. So there's probably no super clear division, so, so the basic rule is basically you have to check and bet hands of every hand category usually, so 3 dows has to be in the donking range and in the checking range. That's usually how these spots work, and that's why I don't play with a donk betting range, at least not versus good opponents, because you don't wanna be sitting there and randomize or whatever, but if you play versus not so good opponents, then just play your hand, yeah.
Cool, uh, someone asked if the 7% is off the seed bet range, so the hands that we see bet off the total range.
Off the total range.
Yeah, I would say that, it seems rather obvious.
Yeah.
Um, shall we move on then, before I cut you guys off again and rush into it? How often does big blind defend versus the big seed bet, call or raise? So we see I called my 6-4 off here. How often does the big blind defend versus big seed bet, call or raise? 42, 61, 52.
So that implies that we sometimes raise this, and that's sick. No, no, overall, or entire range.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think, if we look at the offsuit combos again, we don't have a lot of offsuit combos that miss this too badly, right? Um, I mean, we also see there's like 42, 61, 52, that's, that's like pretty chunky, uh, frequencies.
Yeah, but on the other hand, the 7% big betting range is pretty strong, but it's sick, I'd say around 50%, but...
Yeah, I would have, my tendency would have been there as well, 61 seems too high.
It would be 42.
Yeah, yeah, I would have, I would have said that, it's, it's all pretty, huh, but 52 is like that.
All the middle, of course.
Exactly. Nice. Um, I thought in-game that I would not defend 6-4 off without a club, I, I guess in the next questions, we're gonna get into our specific hand, maybe Ben, if that's the case, and just cut me off here?
Yeah, no, just, just continue.
Okay.
That's usually the way it works at the beginning, it's a little theoretical, just, you know, going over some basics, getting intuition also with the numbers. Because Julian said he's not the type of person that works with these numbers, but then later on in the quizzes, we go more in the specific hand. Um, also the type of fans we wanna be bluffing with, and more explanation, that's then more practical, and also, I would say, more enjoyable of the quizzes. Yeah, but I really think, now I understand why it's good, because these numbers make you think about how the spot works. And that's really good if you start into the hand with thinking about the general, uh, rules.
Julian, we gotta, we gotta go for, we're gonna, we have 20 seconds.
Pure, the third one is pure call.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I cannot imagine we raised this ever.
Yeah, I mean, neither, but...
Maybe like 5% frequency with plans.
Would we have a fold though, we're on call, right?
I don't think, but...
Ooh, I mean, I'm just gonna do it.
All with your intuition, you can just go with your intuition.
Yeah, I'm not just gonna do it, because I did it in-game, and I have to, you know, I have to stay true to my decision, obviously. But, um, as I was already gonna cut into, like, I obviously knew in-game this is like incredibly close, because our old man is obviously a bit scuffed, you might say, with the 10 not being exactly, uh, nice straight out. Um, but in-game I thought the backdoor flush draw makes us wanna call, and I would have pure folded the one without. But we got a little explanation video, should I just, uh...
Yeah, it's less than a minute anyway, it's not long.
Okay, let's go for that.
So this hand is very problematic against the big sizing, we have a lot of reversed implied odds, where our opponent's going to be having a lot of better draws, a 10x hand, um, and...
Sorry?
Oh, wait.
Oh, 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 yeah, you can like, um...
No, I muted this, please, sorry.
Exactly.
Very often he's going to be having a strong overpair, when we hit our draw, we're not really gonna get paid out. So this is just a hand that doesn't have good implied odds, we get a bad price. Our draw is pretty obvious when we hit it 5 or hit a 10, and this then not going to be bluffed, or he's not gonna be value betting anything weaker. In fact, he might be having a better straight or better backdoor flush, and then, yeah, we're going to be, uh, paying him a lot of money. So here, yeah, we should be very, very careful with the hands we call, and even in GTO, the 6-4 off just wants to pure fold.
Okay, cool, so that's pretty much kind of what I said already, that I was straight out even, okay?
I couldn't hear it, because if I unmute me, you have a double sound on your stream, right?
If, if you have, if you're listening through speakers, we do, but if...
Ah, okay, then, then I'm gonna watch it on the cellphone next time, so what did Ben say, like the straight outs, we don't have implied?
He, he, he has essentially said that our implied odds are not great, and even if we do hit our hands, we just, I'm not gonna get paid too often, etc, etc.
Yeah.
Obviously even the backdoor flush draw is the best, but you know, may...
It's also the big sizing, right, actually I didn't even think about the big size.
I mean, that, that, that surely has to be the main concern, right, if we face a quarter bet, then there's never ever any folding.
Do you think, is it a call, uh, but it should be a call versus like third pot bet or something, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Way wide range and stuff, okay? Yeah, I mean, then you still have the, you know, the, I don't know, king, queen and diamonds, or king four, whatever, diamonds, or, you know, the ace kings, or just way more random protection seed bets, right? Uh, so here, it's going to be way more polarized, and usually, he should be choosing like very high equity draws, so like ace 10 clubs, or king 10 clubs, you know, where he really wants to build a pot, and he doesn't mind facing a check raise. You don't wanna, really wanna be betting king, queen and clubs large, because once the money goes in, you're usually just going to be sitting on a pure flush draw. Alright, we're gonna be raising, uh, a6 clubs, we're gonna be ace 8, ace 10 clubs, ace 6, ace 5 clubs, and then you, it looks like as if you have a strong draw, but you, you're gonna be running into two pairs, and straights, and sets, and yada, 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 and then you just have a pure flush draw, and this is great. So like the king queens, um, ace, king, clubs probably just wants to be choosing a small sizing, and if you uh, want to have a good hand, then, I think queen, jack and diamonds are also pretty sexy, uh, to, to, take it as a potential triple barrel hand, you know, where you can get him fold, where you unblock a lot of the call, call, fold hands, um... Yeah, you're not blocking the 10 eights, the 10 sevens, you still block jack 10, which is quite relevant, and then...
Also unblock some backdoor hard flops.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, king, king, jack, diamonds, king, jack, spades, queen, jack, maybe some ace jacks, um, potentially some ace 6, king 6 combos, not blocking the flush, just like, these are the hands that would come to my mind, where on decent runouts, I would go for to re-blaugh.
Cool. Um, they also, as I pointed out, that you are wearing the same shirt in the chat, which I think you've already seen. But, um, this, this is nothing negative, which means that this is really fresh content, because this video, this video might have been, we call it today, yesterday. This is like straight out of the lab, straight out of the lab towards our, towards our brains.
But I'm also very often wearing the same shirts for a couple of days, so I'm...
Well, great, that's, that's how it should be.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, well, we, we see my decision was wrong, but maybe, just maybe, I go on winning the hand, but I'm not gonna spoil anything here.
Julian would have for sure raised and punted it off.
Okay, gonna press the continue button, let's go. How often do we want to lead on the turn using a small one-third sizing only? I think this is a rather unintentional lead. Um, in-game, I'm either flat, who knows, no spoilers, but I think this, this would make sense, because in positions, flashes are gonna be king X and a6 quite, quite often, because he's not raising that many suited hands, the suited hands are blocked by the board, which is why I think in the big blind, we have an insane flush advantage, also Ben already said that the flush draws do not wanna bet big on it on the flop, which is why I think our flush advantage is even bigger. So I think donking could happen here, I think I would go for a 25% frequency, but maybe it's a 10 one, what do you think?
Uh, I thought it's, I mean, 10 max, I don't know. This structure doesn't strike me like a structure where we wanna donk a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I did say it's unintentional, the 25 was right, okay, I, I was, I was not gonna give myself that much, that much credit, I think, uh... But yeah, it's interesting, we don't have a video here, um, but I guess it's for the reasons I just stated, and the one that you said earlier.
Yeah, basically, we, I mean, in, in practice, I think we should probably not lead, because I just, first of all, expect his, he's gonna be on a lot of ace nines, queen, queen, um, these hands that just wants to bet big, of course, some pocket kings as well. Um, but he might be on ace 10 and hearts, which I think he's now checking back, so first of all, I think we're going to be realizing a lot of our equity anyway. Um, and second of all, we not, we're basically not going to have any air anymore, right? He can still have queen jacks, he can still have ace tens, ace jacks, he could be on ace 6, but like, we mostly, like 6-4 is literally the worst hand, like we have 10 aces, jack tens, against that sizing, we should be raising a lot of flush draws, so we have all the flushes in the world. He's going to be splitting it, he's going to be sometimes betting small, sometimes betting big, sometimes checking. So it's really good for us to, to see a high card and a club, uh, on this kind of board texture, where, yeah, we can start leading all flushes. Uh, especially where his pocket tens, pocket jacks, pocket queens are going to be checking back, charge those. If we're something like 6-4, we get some fours from queen jacks, and even against a small sizing, he's... If we're something like six-four, we get some folds from queen jacks, and even against a small sizing, he starts folding pocket queens without a club, uh, he starts folding some of these one pair hands, ace-nine, queen-nine suited, so...
I could also even see hands that dominate us, like ace-six, for example, I mean, there are only four commas, three commas left of ace-six, of course, but I could see a hand like that being indifferent already against the third dunk.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So there are a lot of merits in betting, and the biggest merit is always, you want to, want to see a river as cheap as possible, right? You want to get to the showdown with the least amount of investment, with, uh, yeah, a lot of your weak holdings, and you can balance that with your, yeah, with all the strong, you cannot just go ahead and raise you and exploit you, because you just have too many flushes. And, and like ace-nine, ace and clubs, like, ace-nine, ace and clubs, such a sexy bet, where, you know, you get him to call something like ace, queen, queen and clubs, so you get a lot of these like weak ace-hands that didn't wanna call. Um, but you also start making him fold something like pocket queens, right? Which is pretty nice.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, a lot of these hands that might seem like it's a very natural check, actually wants to start leading and dictate the price. And, yeah, and then on the river, we see, depending on the runout, what kind of hands we choose as bluff, because everything can happen, like, this board, it might be a straight, it might be paired, it might be another club, it might be a blank, and our strategy changes entirely depending on the runout. But for the turn, I think it just, for the turn, for me, it's like, hey, okay, let's just try to implement some leads, because I have hands like, you know, ace-six and hearts here, where I have to check forward against a second barrel, I have to check forward ace-ten, I have to check forward a lot of my queen tens, and I would like to see a river with those hands, and that's my intention behind start leading the turn. I wanna be, you know, just throwing in these cheap bluffs, and here and there, also betting with my flushes, because if he has a strong hand, he's also checking those back very likely, because he wants to control the size of the pot.
Yeah, and that's generally the main intention behind dunking, right? If villain's gonna check a lot, then...
Genau, yeah.
That's what, genau, yeah. Okay. Let's see the one-third lead from Hero.
You seem a bit skeptical about the, uh, about the leading strategy, something you wouldn't do, is something, yeah, I tried to simplify, just keep checking your range?
Yeah, no, I thought that it's, there might be some leads, but whenever I'm not hundred percent sure, I'm not leading. And here, I just wasn't hundred percent sure, so I wouldn't have let, so it's just important that you're very, very confident that it's a good spot to lead, and that you have a plan what these hands wants to do. I think this hand, this hand wants to bluff a lot of rivers, for example.
Yeah.
Agreed, but yeah, I think I also mentioned right at the start, that I also thought this was like an unintentional, uh, an intuitive dunk, because, you know, usually on flush competitors, you don't wanna dunk that much out of the big blanks. But here, they...
Yeah, but you also said that the king of clubs makes a big difference, because that reduces the amount of flushes he can have quite a bit.
Exactly.
Yeah, the whole arguments that Ben said, they really make sense, but you have to be confident and don't just wanna implement leads, uh, just because you wanna play cool or something. I mean, I don't, I'm not talking about you guys, obviously.
So, but as a rule of thumb for turn flushes in general, is if it's a flush card that reduces the amount of flushes your opponent can have, like usually a king, uh, king and clubs, for example, is a pretty good example here. If it's a deuce or three-ix in clubs, we basically, I think it goes down to five or ten percent, like, basically, you can really then just keep checking your entire range, because your opponent still has a lot of flushes. And a three in clubs, you know, is like, blocks also a lot of our really weak flushes that we don't wanna raise on the flop, and our opponent could still have all the strong flushes. So, yeah, we still also have strong flushes, but we, since it's not a king, it should be pretty obvious, right? You cannot have king, queen, king, jack, king-ten and clubs, or ace, king and clubs anymore. Uh, but if it's a deuce, six in club, he can still have all of those, and we're gonna be betting more often in a range that still contains a lot of flushes. So, as a rule of thumb, for example, six in clubs, they're different, or five in clubs, because now, like, we have all the straights in the world as well, like, it's just such a, I think we start leading thirty, forty percent of the time. Um, whereas the jack in clubs, for example, where also opponent improves to a lot of straights, then there's less leading happening again, so it's always like, okay, what kind of flash, flash card, flush card improves our opponent's range or our own range? Um, and something to keep in mind when it comes to leading, but in general, I mean, this is a very specific board, and like, there's so many different cards that, it's a very difficult board, difficult turn to play. I, it's not always like this. If you, for example, take a four-five deuce board, or six-seven-three board, six-seven-deuce board, whatever, and then the turn is, you know, a high card and a club, you can keep that in mind. Oh, yeah, a jack of clubs, or queen of clubs, we're gonna start leading more, or a king of clubs, if it's a low card, you keep checking more, uh, you know, as a rule of thumb for you guys to understand, okay, on which cards we lead more and which cards we lead less.
Cool. I think this is also been mentioned one or two times, but I really can't stress enough how important this is to also remember the flop action in this spot, because, you know, already mentioned, but the big bet on the flop makes it a lot different, and I think against a quarter flop bet, the strategy would deviate again.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shall we press continue and see how this beautiful hand played out? Okay, immediately the next question, why do we want to lead the turn in theory? Okay, well, we might have a bit of a nice preparation that we just had for this question, to get information where we stand with our hand. Hmm, villain's flop range is very polarized and the turn brings us nut advantage. Okay, villain will check back turns since the card improves us, and we want to generate EV by value betting a lot as well as us realizing equity with our bluffs. Julian, what do you think?
Uh, I mean, the main reason usually for taking the betting lead is change in nut advantage, there's basically no lead spots without change in nut advantage, but it's tough to read the rest.
Hmm, yeah, I think the second one is, the second one is not the right one, because villain's flop range is not polarized, and all the points from the third one are correct, so the last second decision was, oh, submit? Oh, it's both of them, well, okay. This always tricks me, whether it's, when there's more correct answers, because I'm always so focused on, hmm, trying to sort out which one is might not be correct, and the polarized thing on the flop. Villain's flop range is very polarized.
Do you guys say the range is not, you said the range is not very polarized?
Well, I felt like on the...
And again, this is in theory, right? In practice, I agree with you, but this is why brackets in theory.
Hmm, okay, I also kind of misread this and was thinking about villain's range is polarized, and then I thought on the turn, hmm, he's got a lot of queens, jacks, as you already said. It's like, whether linear, sure, they're not really strong hands, but he also got his nut flushes still in the range, so I would have said it's not necessarily a polarized range on the turn, but I guess on the flop, um, I overread this clearly, um, and then it makes more sense, and then I would also totally agree with it.
Because if you look at these spots, they are very, very heavily connected, and in position wants to use some smaller amounts of bigger sizings, usually he picks hands like ace-deuce, ace-three, um, like some ace-queens, just really target those, let's say, a seven-four suited that has to fold against a big sizing, folding out these six fours, so folding out these six threes. Uh, because even start folding out, let's say, uh, ten-deuce, ten-five, you start folding out more equity. I'm not saying this might necessarily make sense, because even you as a good player, you continue with six-four, and you're supposed to fold this, and I think here, it's really good to just be very value-heavy with your bluffs, and not just because GTO says to find these, uh, bluffs with ace-three here on the flop. But like, this is just again to give you a bit of understanding, even seven-five off with a pair and a gut shot starts folding against a big sizing. Uh, the queen sevens, like, uh, queen-six type of fans start folding, um, this is why we wanna start using some bigger sizes, because we actually push a lot of equity for ourselves, by folding out a lot of equity with these bigger sizing. Um, does it make sense in reality? Probably Julian agrees with me as that as well, even I can see myself calling there with six-four off in clubs, and six in clubs, just feels so natural to call that against a big sizing. But yeah, we're supposed to be actually quite nitty then against the big sizing.
Would you say that, um, because of course, a lot of the audience here in chat is not playing the high stakes, of course, and not this tournament, would you say that on low stakes and mid-stakes, um, the stickiness with those marginal combos happens as well, or would you say that people are more leaning towards folding?
Yeah, I think even on high stakes, I mean, I definitely see a lot of the good high-stakes rigs being very sticky with those hands on this board.
Okay. Okay, because I would actually say it's more likely on higher stakes than on lower stakes, but I could see it happening on both, really.
Yeah.
But from what I've heard and seen, people on high stakes don't really like to fold and, yeah, fight for every pot.
It's really interesting, because these kind of structures, like nine-eight-seven, for me personally, when I did a database analysis lately, uh, those were kind of the structures that I struggled most with, and then I did a training session on it, and it was actually, uh, I over, I defended too much on these structures. So counter-intuitively enough, these are structures where people call too much, especially versus big bets, like, there's a lot of structures, like eighty percent of flops, where weak players, uh, overfold, I think, to seabeds. But these structures, it's super counterintuitive that you defend too much, especially because you have these kind of hands where it feels like, oh, yeah, I have an open ender, I cannot fold.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Okay, should I, I think, oh, wait.
And that's why, that's why we're just, yeah, that's why it's important to be really careful, because, you know, as you know, in poker, there's so many different options how you can phrase a question, so it's like, okay, why do we wanna lead the turn in theory? Right? It's like, okay, how do we really wanna approach this spot in theory? Three points, okay, let's just break it down, how we're supposed to play this spot in theory, and as we remember, on the flop, his range is supposed to be polarized on the flop. He's not supposed to be betting big with queen nines, or king nines, or jack nines, or an ace-eight, queen-eight. If you take, if, let's say, it's a smaller sizing, we would say it's more linear, they certainly some protection bets with jack-nine, queen-eight, king-nine, all these sorts of hands, maybe an ace-seven even with low frequency, there's gonna be more merged betting going on. With a big sizing, these hands are very likely not going to be in this range, it's more likely two pair sets, straights and overpairs, and some very strong hands, and then, according to theory, some like ace-three diamonds, ace-deuce diamonds, or in hearts, these kind of hands. Um, pocket fives or pocket sixes, uh, the king jacks or the ace queens, just like random overcards. Um, this is then basically the, the polarized part, right? Like, very trashy hands or very strong hands, but it doesn't contain that middle part, that is just second pairs or weak top pairs. Um, but that's again, only in theory, so then on the turn, it makes sense, right? You just lead here, because you make him fold ace-deuce, you make him fold ace-three, you make him fold ace-queen, you make him fold pocket queens, but as we said, that's not how it happens in practice, on the tables, because people don't find this bluff on the flop with ace-three. So, um, nevertheless, I would still lead these hands once I call, I really like it, but then we also need to very often find another barrel on the river, because, yeah, um, otherwise, he's probably not gonna be folding a king or a pocket aces with no club or pocket queens. I don't expect you have a lot of fold equity, this is a spot where you print a lot with going for the grown-up bluff, as Julian would say.
Hmm. Um, show explanation, I'm...
With a meta sizing on the river.
I'm expecting there's another video for show explanation, but, um...
Yeah, it's the same explanation.
So we'll skip it, right?
Yeah, you can skip it.
Okay, cool.
A meta sizing here, right, Julian?
Who sees us? We're going to show all the German speaking.
We should bluff this river if we don't improve, while Ben has already touched this, and you as well, you don't have touched this already.
I, I, I mean, this river, we shouldn't bluff, but, uh, or maybe we should, or don't, who knows?
But let's say if we don't improve.
Yeah, if we don't improve, like, I usually, my general rule of thumb, like, the question here is what is better to have as a blocker bluff, like the ace of clubs or the six of clubs? Because pro six of clubs is ace of clubs peels the turn and then folds the river, unimproved, or turns into a bluff, who knows?
Yeah, I also get really caught up in the blockers, I think here clearly we block ace-six of clubs, which is really not a combo, we also block pocket sixes, but it's questionable if this line is being taken by villain with pocket sixes with a club. Either way, I think we should bluff this hand, right? On the river, most, if we don't improve. But yet, this is something where I get confused a lot, a lot, a lot in-game, where I get caught up in my exact blockers, where I feel like my blockers have positives and negatives, downsides and upsides. In this spot particularly, I think, if we think about it again, our blockers pretty indifferent. As pocket sixes is probably a pretty low frequency line, or we don't end up in this exact spot, and this tree with pocket sixes, we will have a pocket sixes. Ace-six suited is a hand that could potentially fall into this game tree, and then we obviously block that, the four is super indifferent, uh, which is a good thing in this spot. Um, and then with our clear nut advantage, or the flushes, now the queen of clubs is on the board as well, okay, sorry, nevermind, this is when we don't improve, obviously. But, um, yeah, overall, it should be quite obvious that we should be bluffing this end, but, yeah, I think it can get, it starts getting, or it happens pretty easily, that if you start thinking a lot about your blockers on the river, you can get confused really, really easily, and it's tough to like have a, to, to, um, hold your overview, or to achieve an overview of your whole range and play that sort of perfectly.
Yeah.
Yeah, range awareness is so tough in tournaments, like for cash gamers, this is way easier with the...
I love it, yeah.
Yeah, I really like, and also everyone that is watching, I mean, from a theoretical standpoint, everything you said is absolutely right, nothing to say about that. I just don't think it's a very effective thought process, especially in-game, even if we're studying, if I get to the river, I ask myself, what are the hands I'm getting to fold? Just really thinking back, and this is so, as we just see, we sit here, we have no pressure, we even forget about what we assumed on the flop, right? Ah, yeah, polarized range, big sizing, ah, yeah, here was a big sizing, now if you have five, ten tables, twelve tables, and a stream or off-stream or whatever, it's so much harder, just to remember those very basic stuff. What was the flop sizing? What's his range like? What am I getting him to fold on the river? I'm really asking myself, what are the hands? All right, I make him fold, or at least, there's a reasonable chance he folds those, like, because A, I represent a lot of value hands, I barely have any bluffs, um, and he has a lot of bluff catchers in his range. And there were also, there are also a lot of auto-folds in his range, he can have ace-ten with the ten and clubs, or ace and clubs, okay, he might turn these into bluff, but people are a little hesitant with bluff raising rivers. He can have, um, still, ace-nine, he can have some ten-nines, he can have pocket tens, pocket jacks without a club, um, he can have king-ten without a club, he can queens, jacks, aces, a lot of these hands, like, actually, yeah, okay, a lot of hands, A, a lot, first of all, a couple of combos he's snap-folding with, which really, always really helps for EV with bluffing. So you already have those five, ten percent fold equity, and then if he finds, I don't know, even just fifty percent of the time, the folds with the hands just I mentioned, it's always a profitable bluff, right? So this is where I wouldn't think too much about blockers, I would just really the old street poker style, thinking the hands through, what are the hands he can fold on the river, which hands make sense? You know, I'm not gonna be like, he has pocket deuce here on the river, because that's then, you lack the ability of connecting dots, because he's not opening a pre-flop, so it's very important, all right, he's not gonna have pocket fives, pocket fours, we don't need to think about those, what are really realistic hands he comes to the river with? Let's think about it, what hands can he fold, and very often, if you ask yourself the question, you'll be like, wow, he's probably, he's a very strong range, like, it's really hard to make him fold these hands. Beep, beep, alarm, don't bluff, right? It should be a signal. But here, definitely, a lot of hands, a lot of bluff catchers in his range, in my opinion, great spot to bluff, even if it's the three in clubs, or, uh, even if it's like, yeah, uh, three in hearts, or deuce in hearts, or whatever, and not the queen in clubs, or queen in hearts, or queen in diamonds, I mean, the, this card is even better, because now even our queen jacks, queen tens get there, we're probably not gonna be bluffing those, so, yeah. So, don't make things too complicated, Leon.
Hmm, I think this is really good, yeah, I think this is also like a pretty, like, this is an amazing spot to visualize how many snap-folds villain has in this range, just because of we dunk a third on the turn, he needs to continue, and he wants to continue, with so many, like, of us, even like ace-ten without a club, where he has an open ender, he's gonna struggle to press the fold button. There's so many snap-folds, and, yeah, it's really good to point it out, and we think about that, and you also mentioned, like, it's tough for us to find too many bluffs. Um, someone, like, I mean, we can mention this end, in particular, was against Adrian Mateos. Um, and someone like that is gonna be aware, okay, I have so many auto-folds in my range, I need to bluff catch some of those, but a lot of people in population are just gonna fold any one pair, essentially, on non-club rivers.
Even on high stakes, there's still so many bluffs, uh, spots that are underbluffed. I mean, I just, you know, Julian, remember our sessions when we discussed strategy on, when we were on a bootcamp, or we were just grinding together, talking heads, it was mostly just us, um, discussing whether we think we have enough fold equity or not, right? And just trying to figure out whether it's a good spot or blah, of course, here and there, we would mention blockers, some theoretical basics, I'm not trying to deny that, I'm not saying you should never study GTO, but then, when it comes to application, it's just the rock-solid, low-sticks grinder approach, that, uh, is very important, just straightforward ABCs. Uh, Simaps is saying, don't think so high stakes, you know, I think it's very well said, that a lot of the players are just, oh, I need to sound, or I need to think like a high-stakes player, and I think this is just not true, I think... that a lot of the players are just, oh, I need to sound or I need to think like a high stakes player. And I I I think this is just not true. I think you just need to think like a very solid, straightforward player. And that's just so much more important. You won't be able to break down all the ranges and blockers while you play. You have like a couple of seconds and make a decision. And you need to have a lot of efficiency in your thought process.
True. Um, something else in the chat, Julian, ninety one tower is saying, nice to see the best small blind player in the world. And he's uh referring to you. Can we get some insights on that? Why are you the best small blind player in the world?
What was the small blind player about?
I I don't know, but 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 he's clearly referring to you as the best small blind player in the world. And I don't quite know what he means.
It's he, it's he.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, he says the best small blind player in the world is helping out Romuko Lulu and the guy who has some coaching related company, which I assume is uh is Ben in that in that case.
I I'm very, very good uh in the small blind, that's for sure. And I also do a small blind on blind session for Raise Your Edge soon, so Hmm, should be interesting, yeah.
Cool. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to know if there's some uh
I I find this very offending, by the way, that he calls you the best small blind player in the world. It's not only the small, but there's so many more areas where you are the best player in the world, so. You should, you should probably ban this ninety one tower for offending Julian Thomas here in the chat.
Yeah, it's impossible to uh ban ninety one tower. He's 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 the bit of the biggest regular in this in this chat. We can't lose him.
He's now even a moderator.
Exactly.
Please ban yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't get rid of him. But yeah, thanks for, thanks for pointing this out. Simplifying things is definitely something I sometimes like, for sure. Um I guess this explanation once again is gonna mirror what you just said.
Hmm.
But for anyone who hasn't seen it, can check it out on the website, of course. Um, and yeah, it just goes, oh, we have another question. Which hands should villain turn into a bluff on the river? Select all the correct answers below.
Wow, this is a tough one. Oh, there's actually suggestions. Let's go, jacks without a club, king, jack, king, and without.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that king, jack and king, ten will have enough enough showdown.
Yeah, it feels like. Uh. So we want to somehow block the low flushes that check calls. So I think that ace nine, ace eight blocks some of the nine, six with clubs or stuff that we might
But we 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 don't have that three, I think. We might not have that three. Nine, six off, we don't.
Like, but on this structure, I don't think it makes so much sense to lead a hand like nine, six.
Wait, 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 eight seconds. Yeah, it was
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We got eight seconds left. I I'm gonna, yeah, it's both of those. I I I had to select, I had to select something. And it was obvious that it wasn't the king, jack, king, ten. And it makes sense that we do for both. I I I got confused again. Now I tried to
You have, you have good intuition, like you, you basically, you had a good intuition, you were the right track, and then you started confusing yourself.
Right. I tried to figure out, hmm, I I I I tried to compare jacks to ace, nine, ace, eight, as as Julian was doing, like hmm, the the nine, the nine might be bad, might might be good because that then we block some low flushes with the nine, six, et cetera, et cetera. I was trying to to do stuff as well and didn't think straight that both options might be quite uh quite reasonable.
Yeah.
Because this is also
It's also tough because I usually don't lead this spot and then it's so hard
No, but this is for, I mean, you basically, the action is lead turn and then now this river, if we check to him, as it happened, what is he supposed to be bluffing, right? That's the action, just to get this straight.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then uh and then obviously, I put myself into his perspective and think about what I want to block and unblock. But uh it's super tough. I thought a lot about these uh one card bluff spots lately and it's it's really because there's no real natural blockers, right? There's like, if there's a brick, then you obviously want to have some uh low club or something that blocks uh blocks the check calls um and stuff. But or like when there's a straight flop, then you want to block a straight and this and that. It's way more obvious, but on these one card flashes, it's really, really tough to determine because you have to turn pairs usually.
But it's never a top, I think, what what is really important here is the only rule that applies for for the most part is you're not bluffing with a top here. Everything else is legitimate. Like if you bluff with a nine or an eight or pocket jacks, it all has relatively high EV or similar EV, and it does it to a certain frequency, sometimes even full frequency, a hundred percent. So, yeah, um i- i- as long as you have showdown value, if you can win, let's say against his nine X or queen X, you know, you just check it back. But like here with an ace, nine, you're very likely not going to have any showdown value. Because you you want to unblock his king, jacks, his king, tens, his king, sixes, uh maybe some king, X, two pairs. Uh the queen, jacks, queen, tens that led the turn. Um, you know, if you have something like queen, jack and hearts, queen, ten and hearts. So yeah, you don't want to be blocking, bluffing with a king or with a queen. You're never really gonna have a queen anyway. Like you're not gonna be calling queen, jack, queen, ten and diamonds. Um like, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, ace, queen with an ace of clubs, but that's all.
Yeah, but that's a very bad, right?
I I I I also like to like to think with ace nine, you said we have no showdown. I I think this is like the bottom of our range and it's reasonable to bluff. But but I think this is a spot that naturally gets maybe even range checked from out of position. I I feel like, I mean, I I'm personally approaching a lot of these spots where the four card flush heads in position clearly has the higher flushes usually because of the offsuit, you know, ace, king, ace, jack, whatever. Sure, the the block by the board now, which might be why the spot is way different. But I think this could easily get range checked from out of position quite often. And then if he if he ends up there with a nine, six suited, that he blocked on the turn, um then he's still a certain range, like a ten, nine, eight, eight, six, whatever. Um, it's just a question whether or not this is being range checked and whether or not this is being re- this is reasonable.
Yeah. All right, let's let's move on. We took us an hour for this one ahead.
Oh, it's over now? It's over.
Even though we had a time limit, yeah.
What does the forty five mean? That's limits, we got forty five percent?
Yeah, you got hundred percent and five fifty four of the questions.
Oh, Julian, this is like a
Yeah, can you scroll down? What's the, okay, this question, this is pretty fresh. Yes, there aren't pretty any.
Whoever's Tom crushed the spot apparently. Um, okay, sure. That that was, that was pretty interesting. Also like a quite untypical hand, obviously.
Yeah, it's also a very difficult board to play, like because whenever it can change so much from one street to another and just it's, yeah, it's it's a pretty dynamic board, of course.
Hmm.
Then if I P jams, I would just fold. I I don't think people for bluff.
Oh, all right, we haven't talked about what is it, what we even do once. Um, well, I do think now that we have looked at what you 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 thought was reasonable to bluff, you you mentioned jacks, you mentioned ace, nine, ace, eight. I think this, it could be possible that this is being overbluff by uh by some more aggressive highs or some more aggressive plays in general. When they have so many, so many clear pairs that might not have showdown value, they have tens, jacks. And then the ace, 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 nine, ace, eight, while they only have some offsuit combos of ace, jack, ace, ten. There's no, no other offsuit combo at all. They have jack, jack ten of clubs, which might raise on the turn, not sure. Might also, might also most certainly not big bet the flop and then there's only the nut flushes left.
Yeah.
So 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 I could see this being a super reasonable catcher if they overbluff, but it's just a question of whether or not they do. By the way, in this hand, for those interested, Mateos had pocket kings and check back. Which seems rather obvious that that's the play. All right, uh where do I go now? If I go next, will this American Troy, I guess?
Hmm?
Is this already? No, this is the same hand, right? So I'm just gonna go to
The, you had the king, six.
Hmm, yeah. King, six, let's go.
And I think, like, I I I mean, you you played, I think, on on turn and then river, you would have found the uh the bluff, uh if if you would have improved. I would just say that the flop play is the most important as a takeaway, that you don't call it against the big sizing. Like you always, for everything that you study, you want to have few takeaways. You're not gonna remember everything what we said here, but just like, as bottom line, fold these very marginal hands against large size, even if it's a somewhat good board for you. Um, and you will already improve your win rate.